Good evening, welcome to the Select Board Meeting of October 24th, 2024. With some of the pledge allegiance led by Tom.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have open forum, so we have several known items, two of them celebratory. First, to congratulate Captain and EMT Sean Gerard, who's retiring from the fire department after thirty-four years of service. So, thank you, Sean, and good luck with your future endeavors. I'm sure you'll have many, many good years with Westford and look forward to that. Secondly, want to recognize Public Safety Communications Manager, Tim Whitcomb, who's also retiring after thirty-six years of service. He beats out Sean by a couple of years. And again, congratulations, Tim. I know most recently, Tom and I worked with Tim as we put together the police and fire staffing, he had a lot of the records and stats, so I appreciate his service to the town of Westford. Other items is that the Friends of the Poor Walk for the Society of St. Vincent de Paul will be occurring November eleventh, from eight thirty to eleven thirty at St. Catherine's Church here in Westford. And finally, we have announcement on Town Hall operating hours for November, December, I'll pass on to Kristen.
Absolutely. So traditionally, the Town Hall closes at noon Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so that is Wednesday, November twenty-seventh, and then we are closed for the holiday Thursday and Friday. Also, Christmas this year falls on a Wednesday, so we'd be looking to close the Town Hall at noon on Tuesday, December twenty-fourth, opening back on Thursday, December twenty-sixth, and then closing for New Year's Eve at noon on December thirty-first, staying closed January first and reopening January second.
And the last thing I have on my list is to check your town website for the dates for the flu shots in town. Take advantage of that before winter comes. With that, anything from the board?
This Saturday is the Westford Historical Society is hosting a Westford Historical House Tour, so if you're the Westford Historical website, you can see if there's any tickets left, and there'll be lots of people in historic dress, including me, my tri-corner hat, so I'll be looking forward to seeing whoever joins us for that.
Unless the other board members have anything. So I have two things. So I'd like to congratulate Ellen Rainville. Today is her fortieth anniversary of being the library director for the town of Westford, which is a huge accomplishment. I also believe she may be our longest-running employee now in the town of Westford. She started very young as a page, I believe, and then has worked her way up, and we're very grateful for her service and congratulate her for that. Also, we are proud to announce that the town's new website redesign launched this morning. It's a new look and feel, some new buttons. Please do be patient with us, we have a few tweaks that we're making. We couldn't see everything until the button was switched, and we also want to really thank members of the public and our employees. We had a working group of employees for this website redesign. We had a survey for our residents and our employees, took that feedback, and then up to the very end, we had a focus group of residents taking a look at the final navigation and design, so really a collaboration of partnerships with the town and the residents. So if anyone sees anything that they'd like to, that is either missing or wasn't there, please feel free to reach out, but we appreciate everyone's patience as we work through the new design.
It was the town's birthday.
It was the town's birthday yesterday, two-hundred-and-ninety-fifth birthday yesterday as well.
And no cake, I'm sorry, but all accounts wouldn't fit. Anything from the audience for open forum? Valerie?
Westfest is also on Saturday at Stony Brook. The Westford Education Foundation puts on food trucks, there's community booths, like games, inflatables, community members get pied in the face. It's a lot of fun, it's from twelve to four down at Stony Brook.
Thanks. Anything else? Okay, with that, moving on to the consent agenda. First, there is a street closure request for the mobile event. Applicant is Kelly Silva. The date will be October twentieth, twenty-twenty-four, day before town meeting, news alert. Location is at number five Fisher Way to the end of Fisher Way from ten-thirty to four P.M. And secondly, a Town Con and Bandstone request for the Town Con and Tree Lighting request is from the Westford Girl Scouts, Kiara Ernest, December first, twenty-twenty-four, from four to six P.M. Is there a motion to approve subject to Public Safety comments?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have American Rescue Plan Act, discussion of what's funding and a couple of proposals, and as always, our trustee Town Budget Director, Dan, is here to lead us through.
And Mike Wells is on Zoom.
Great, so just an overview on where we are with our remaining balance. Currently, we have just over five-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars remaining. So far this year, we've funded five projects for just over a hundred-and-seven thousand, which is great. I do have to say that cash cow machine in the tax collector's office saves about half-hour a day, so that was a very good investment, so thank you for that. So tonight, we have two projects totaling a hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand. If both are approved, we'll be down to three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand in ARPA fund. That doesn't include some projects that will probably close out in the coming months as we're wrapping up some projects.
So would you like Mike to present his request?
Yes, please.
Great, okay, Mike, you're up.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. I'm going to take these two projects in reverse order. Let's start with the twenty-thousand one. This is a project which has come up very recently. We experienced a major outage on our network at the beginning of the term. I think it was the first day that the freshmen were in WA. We came in in the morning and everything was down, and it was eventually tracked down to some failed fiber pairs in the fiber cable that runs. It starts its run-up at Town Hall and works its way all the way down Forge Village Road to the tech center, going through via WA, the water department, the cemetery offices, council aging, the water tower, and so on. And we lost some of the strands in that cable somewhere between the water department and the end of Forge Village Road. We've had a, normally what we do when this happens, it's not the first time we've had problems with it, is we get a crew out, they can see that a squirrel's chewed through it, or a tree has fallen on it or something, and they can fix it fairly easily. Unfortunately, this time, despite coming out twice to examine the fiber, they've been unable to figure out what's wrong with it. And given that that leg of fiber is nearly twenty years old now, I think the sensible thing to do is just to pull a new fiber alongside it and switch over to a new fiber, and that's what the twenty-thousand dollars is for. We've had an estimate from a contractor to do the work for thirteen or fourteen thousand dollars. There's going to be police details on top of that as well, and seeing as it all runs along the road, there's probably going to be significant police details, so I'm asking for twenty thousand to get that work done. Any questions about that one?
No, I guess Chris does.
Hey, Mike, so is the rest of the fire fiber network also at the same time of, or age, excuse me, of twenty years old, or is this just a particularly old section?
This is the oldest, the oldest leg, as I understand it, the oldest significant leg that we've got, is this one from Town Hall down to the tech center. The second major leg has run up North Main Street towards the Highway Department and out towards Nutting Road and Stony Brook School and things like that, and makes its way eventually up to the NAB school and out to, and there it joins the other strand of network, but that's some years newer. I think it was done just before I started it, so that's probably about fourteen years old. But, I mean, you'd expect to get at least twenty years out of a fiber cable, although this one unfortunately is a design that they don't make anymore, read into that what you will. So I just think, given that we've had problems with it in the past, and we know some of the attachments are not great on that length of fiber, it makes sense to replace it at this point. I don't think we ought to, at this point, plan to, a large-scale project to renew it progressively. I think we can probably continue to patch it up for a few more years, you know, another ten, fifteen years maybe, before we have to start thinking about completely replacing it.
Okay, that was kind of where I was going to go with my questioning, was would it make more sense to look at this holistically and maybe try to replace the entire network? But if you feel like this is the more appropriate route, I think that's good for me, thank you.
I think, you know, I think for one thing, it might not make sense to do, to plan something like that anyway while we've got the space study going on and the plan for the buildings anyway, because we might end up building it and then discovering we missed one of the buildings, which would be annoying, or even worse, run a whole new cable to the tech center and then discover we're going to close it. So I think for now, we continue to patch it as we need to and keep an eye on it. This has been by far the most troublesome leg, and it's the oldest leg, so I think let's replace this piece of it.
Any other questions?
Okay, so the other item on there is a project that's been a lot longer in the cooking. That's, this is, it was really started by our need to get onto multi-factor authentication on the town side, and what we realized after a while looking at this was the fact that we are still entirely self-hosted for all our authentication and for our exchange email services and file services and things like that. We are going against what Microsoft are trying to encourage us to do, and that's getting increasingly difficult technologically. They're releasing fewer and fewer things for self-hosted compared to what they're releasing for cloud services, including multi-factor authentication. They don't have a good solution for multi-factor authentication when you're self-hosted. So we kind of decided that we needed to bite the bullet and switch to cloud-based Microsoft services. That's unfortunately going to create a huge bump in our costs per year, for two reasons. One is we're coming off a three-year deal where our prices were fixed for three years, and we're about to engage in another three-year deal, so we're going to get, we're going to get a big price bump anyway because of that. But secondly, the way we were licensing, in particular, the sort of non-core users, I say non-core users, people who use mostly email and nothing else from us, we were doing that on a sort of concurrency basis, really, and now we're going to have to license named users, which means we're going to have to up the number of licenses we have from somewhere over two-hundred to more like four-hundred. So the result of that is that we calculate the increase in costs per year of some ninety, I think it's ninety-seven, wasn't it, Dan, a year?
It's eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, okay, eighty-nine thousand a year extra above what we've been budgeting in the past for this, and that's even after we've done things like canceled our subscription for Zoom in favor of using Teams, which is included in that licensing deal that we get for that money. There's a bunch of things included that we can not get from third parties now, but even so, the impact on the budget is huge, and it's not something I can cope with, and it's not something, it's something which is going to put a huge strain on the budget overall as we roll over the next few years. So the proposal is we ask for some money from the ARPA fund to offset that in a decreasing way. It's going to offset the full price hike in the first year, less of it in the second year, and a smaller part again in the third year. And that will is okay under ARPA, as I understand it, because we are signing, going to be signing a new three-year deal with Microsoft in November this year, so that, I think, meets the criteria.
Because that's to be spent by when, Dan?
It has to be spent by December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-six, but the contract needs to be signed by the end of this calendar year.
So FY twenty-second would be signed and, would be paid in twenty-six?
Yeah, because we have a July first fiscal year, we'll pay this at the beginning of the year.
Okay, so it's all going to fit, okay, that's all I was worried about. Any other questions from the board?
That's my question.
I guess my question is, given the impact it's going to have on our budget, and since we still have three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars left, I guess my question is, do you want to increase it a bit so that the impact in fiscal year twenty-six, which we know we're already facing a significant budget deficit, do we want to increase it so that we can bring the fifty-nine thousand dollars down, maybe even a little bit more, just to have some money for the budget? That would be my question to the board.
It's a good suggestion.
I'm not going to fight, I'm not going to fight about being given more money, but we are just, to some extent, we're just kicking the can down the road, because this price hike is coming. We either, we either see it in twenty-six, twenty-seven, or twenty-eight, when the money runs out, so.
I guess my concern is, is I think there's probably a few more other ARPA-related last-minute requests that are going to come in, so do we want to have money to potentially deal with those, like the test kits, for example, right? So I'm wondering, do we say yes to this now, and then if there's anything left over, we could come back and increase this appropriation?
That's probably a better idea.
Well, like, in the past, we talked, we did ARPA funding for other items, we did it in a phased approach, that more year one than year two than three, so this is in keeping with that past practice, but I agree, it's, at some point, it's all a bunch of money, and if it's, I don't want to lose it, so if we have no other options come November, by all means, we put it here.
I mean, it is, it is a large price increase, and it's painful, but I think we have to recognize that what we've succeeded in doing by doing it the way we have this long is probably it saved us seven-hundred thousand dollars or something over the course of the last, you know, ten years.
This is, this is, this is town and school, correct? Or just town?
This is just town.
Okay, so, so this is, so the increase, the two-hundred to the four-hundred is because of various community volunteers that have got town emails that only use the email?
Yeah, we have to license those users as well by name now, rather than just saying, we're, you know, we'll have no more than this many users on our servers at once, which is more or less how it works now. We're going to have to literally assign licenses to individual people's accounts for them to work.
Valerie?
Hi, Valerie Young, former Anne Drive. One thing we noticed when we were working on Budget Task Force was trying to get the schools and towns to talk, so I was just wondering if Google Services was considered.
So, Mike, the question was, were Google Services considered? Yes, they were. Mike and I went back and forth very closely with them. Mike, do you want to just explain that very clearly, close, quickly for Valerie?
Yeah, I mean, we looked, we looked at various combinations of switching to Microsoft, switching to Google, you know, fully switching to Google with just a little bit of Microsoft just to keep the state happy so that we can still, and Dan, keep Dan's hair from falling out when he has a red sheet. But in the end, it wasn't going to save us much money because we still have to keep one foot in the, in the Microsoft camp, so, and it's not like the schools who get Google free, it's not free for the town. If you want a, if you want a CGS compliant Google user, which is a requirement for all our PD users and things, and something which you get automatically when you're in the government cloud for Microsoft, it covers things like, is the data going to stay in the U.S.? Is it only accessible to U.S. citizens who are administrating the systems, all those kinds of things? It's hundreds of dollars a year for a, per user, again, which is similar to what we're talking about for Microsoft. So it's not that big a price difference when we look at it that way, and I just think, given the, given how thin most departments are now running, we don't have the capacity to suffer a twenty percent drop in efficiency for even for, you know, months while we, while we make that switch, or whatever the switch would be.
Anybody else? Okay, so what's the rule of the board as for motion to do?
I'll move to approve both.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dan and Mike.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, a seven-ten item, agenda item has gone away. If you didn't see the last-minute correspondence, the applicant has requested a delay until annual town meeting in the spring, so that takes us to the seven-twelve item, which is the street acceptance and layout of Cloverleaf Lane. Who is speaking to that one?
I can speak to that. So at your last meeting, you held a public hearing related to the acceptance and layout of Cloverleaf Lane and referred that back to the planning board. The planning board reviewed that matter and has found everything in order and would permit the Select Board to move forward with placing this article on the town meeting warrant for acceptance at the October special town meeting.
So do we need to do anything now, or just wait till?
You can wait until you're making your recommendations on the warrant, yes.
Because we'll have that hopefully at eight-fifteen, so, John?
Don't we need to continue the public hearing?
No.
On the?
No, because we have, we have.
No, that's dead, that's totally dead, yeah.
So they made you close it, then?
Yeah, they've requested it to be, there's nothing, we can't continue to, you have to continue to a date certain, we have no date certain to continue to.
So it's closed automatically.
It's closed automatically, we don't have to. Okay.
So that takes us to seven-fifteen, and Nicole is here to talk about the activities with Wells Coordinator from FY twenty-four and what you're expecting for twenty-five. Welcome.
Thank you for having me. So in the packet documents for the meeting is an overview of what's occurred over the past year in regards to the job description for the community wellness coordinator, the actions, and then kind of looking forward, kind of backpedaling from July first until next year. So overall, things have continued to move forward as far as the position, the relationships being built through the community and through departments, through town and school. The Community Behavioral and Mental Health Committee has continued to meet monthly. We did take the summer off. Ray Dick and I, the health director, co-chair that meeting. Through that, we have reviewed the data that we have received through Community Teamworks, Emerson Health, Greater Little Health Alliance, and have created goals for the committee as far as the ideas from each member and moving forward as far as the vision of the committee. So we have been meeting from those goals, we have then since then created subcommittees to meet and determine where we're moving forward with the committee. So things such as getting information out to residents about the committee, you know, who knows about the committee, what is this committee, and how do we, how do we do that? Also, how do we get more data? So behavioral and mental health data is not easily accessible, it's really based on the surveys that are around our area, so primarily from hospitals or the Greater Little Health Alliance. There have been surveys done through the health department, but they're a little bit older, so we're trying to get creative on how we come about getting the information to make informed decisions about programming and moving forward with different actions through the committee. Another piece is the different coordination through departments and through the schools. So I work with, closely with the health department, the school guidance departments, so as far as getting information to them on what services are available for youth and families, or overall for residents, to be able to make informed decisions in supporting the families that they work with through the schools. Sometimes those reach, will turn into referrals to me so that I can continue to work with the families if it's not something that can be coordinated through school hours or connections in that way. Through the senior center and the health department, we have collaborations and continued conversations about what's occurring within town. We have started meeting monthly, more like every other month, but as far as getting, as far as that communication between departments. So really, that kind of came through the Budget Task Force when those conversations came up about, you know, we have all these entities within town, what do they really do? You know, so trying to get information out into departments and towns and residents about, we have these departments that aren't duplicating services, they're working collaboratively together to support residents. So through the health department, through the senior center and myself, we meet about every other month to talk about services and information, information sharing and collaboration, and through that, we're also building a health and human services page, which I believe has already, on the, on the webpage. The really cool thing was, we were meeting this morning, and so we were on the old page, and then I clicked something, and then all of a sudden, we were on the new page, so we got to see it live. So we've kind of looked at other towns to kind of mirror, so, you know, Westford not having a dedicated health and human services department, having dedicated departments working together, we really looked at Lexington, Newton, Needham to see what they had to make it easier for residents to know, who do I contact? So, you know, if somebody's having a challenge, or if somebody's having a need for support for themselves or their child or family member, not everybody necessarily thinks of going to their government website to get resources and support, so how do we go about getting that information out to people? So that's part of these meetings as well with the information sharing. So I've connected, you know, with the local pediatric offices in Westford, but also in Drakken and Chumsford, because there's a great number of people that go outside of Westford to get pediatric or internal medicine, so that people are aware of what is available within our community. So, let's see, so in addition to that, we terminated our contract last year with the William James Interface Referral Service, which is a mental health service provider, so if you're in need of mental health counseling or substance use, or in need of resources, you could call them, and they could help fit you with a clinician. So that service was running, if we had renewed it for this year, was going to be sixty-five thousand dollars, so we chose to discontinue the contract and utilize the Massachusetts Behavioral Health Helpline, which was something that came out of former Governor Baker's behavioral health roadmap. So it's a free service to any resident, and so we've been utilizing that, but it needed a little information sharing for residents so that they would know, this is how you know, this is who we now connect with if you have those questions. Interface had been in Westford for several years, so getting that information in all the locations, it was all throughout town, and all of the bulletin boards, and all of the bathrooms, and all the places in Westford, to make sure we were taking that down so that people weren't calling that number and not being able to access, access that information. But if they did, they would get information of who to contact in town so they could get assistance. So we do have a dedicated community wellness page, so I update that pretty regularly, regularly, and pretty much weekly, with any information that we get statewide, but also anything local as far as programming that we're offering or new resources that are available. So that's really dedicated around mental health, behavioral health, substance use, domestic violence, interpartner violence, or parenting supports, so it's a landing page for people to be able to find information, and then I also maintain the community behavioral and mental health page, which I think we're also going to try to tie into that health and human services page, so it's not like in addition, like another place for someone to go, so we can kind of tie all that together. That's in the works right now. It's in like the draft form, that was kind of cool to see, too. So another piece is grant options, so I wrote for a few grants last year, and I was only able to receive one, but it was one that we wrote in the last fiscal year, but we found out in August that we received it for the mobile clinician services, so that would be able to provide the funding for all of next year for that mobile clinician service. And so there's an RFP out right now for that service, and then we'll move forward from there with that. So another piece is I provide adult mental health first aid training, so we did that throughout the year. We had one specifically dedicated just for first responders, then we offered one through the COA, we had one at the library, so we offered in different locations, so it makes it a little bit more available for people as well. We did some mental health awareness programming in collaboration with the Community Behavioral and Mental Health Committee, specifically for May, a little programming through the, through the senior center, and a new thing that the town has offered, previously the senior center used to offer, is something called buried in treasure. So I'm not sure if anybody's ever heard of hoarding disorder, but that's a piece that this buried in treasure curriculum provides, a fifteen-week course. We like to focus more on decluttering. Everybody's probably got some form of clutter in their home, either your basement, or your attic, or a closet, or your trunk, so maybe some aspect of your home that could utilize a little bit of support on how do we take these items and put them maybe in a different location or donate? we take these items and put them maybe in a different location or donate them or give them a new home. So this fifteen week course really supports residents in kind of looking at maybe behaviors that you have. Why do I keep these things? You know, did I have a relative pass away and I just can't get rid of these things because there's, you know, an emotional attachment to those. So an, an ability to process over fifteen weeks about really items and what that looks like. So we had a really great core group of, you know, residents that attended and through that, we've actually created now a support group. So it's a bi-weekly support group, so residents are able to come and attend that so that you can continue with those, so that you're not going back into those habits, you know, where you might now have a new area that now has new items that you've now purchased because, well, man, I just got rid of all those other items. So, you know, so this is really a support for residents to be able to, you know, keep up with those things in the, in the way that they'd like to continue. And we'll start a new group in January. So it'll be a new cohort of residents that will be able to attend. So it was a learning process for me as well. It's not something that I had ever facilitated before, so my husband and I cleaned out our shed. So that was my, that was my goal. And I think that really, that humility there, I think really helped because you were facilitating, but you're also there, you know, so that when you're working with somebody, they can see too that you're not the only, you know, that it's not just them, you know, that you're also going through it too. We do know, do have new items in the shed, so, but we'll move forward. The town manager newsletter, that's something I try to put information in every month so that it's maybe around energy efficiency or mental health services, social supports or just me. So people are aware that I'm a resource to be able to provide for residents' families. I do get quite a bit of information from PD West. They've kind of grabbed onto me, so I do get quite a bit of referrals from PD West regarding mental health referrals. So working with residents to be able to support them in that way. So the mobile clinician services are temporarily on hold, but once the RFP is completed, we hope to begin that shortly. And there's quite a few town committees and boards that I participate in, such as the Mental Health Working Group out of Emerson, DA Mary and Ryan's Opioid Task Force, the Westford Coalition for Nonviolence and things of that such. In addition to those things, I've kind of helped a little bit with the strategic planning process. So through open office hours or some of the engagement sessions, I participated a little bit in the farmer's market. So that was a really enjoyable experience. I also did that the following week for their Public Health Week. And then as well, I feel like the position really kind of fits well with the strategic outcome around caring and engaged community. So that new piece that has kind of been discussed over the past few months. I could share a lot more, but I wanted to kind of summarize it, so that's kind of where, kind of where.
Thank you for all your hard work. I mean, it's wonderful.
Any comments for the board of questions, Tom?
I spent a little bit of time today looking at the resources and it's really evolved to be really impressive. You mentioned sort of awareness in the community maybe being one of the continued challenges just to people expect to be able to go to the town website to get, you know, connected to resources if they're in crisis. Do you, do you have any sense of how, of what the awareness is like? I'm just wondering, it's not an easy problem. I'm just wondering how, how we can make sure more people are aware of what we have. Do you have any, any thoughts for the next year about how we can?
So I, I kind of look at it as an overall, so I came from the nonprofit world. So we worked in home-based services. We went to people's homes. I was in twenty-seven towns with these families. And I'll be honest, not once did I truly think of connecting with a town resource like this to support those families that we worked with. So once I started here, I contacted the program I worked from. I was like, you need to contact those twenty-seven towns and find out if the, A, they have a social worker, you know, do they have, you know, some form of social services through their senior center or something of that such. So I think it's an education, I mean, I'm kind of broadening it, like a state education around town-wide supports or just in general, what do towns do? You know, I think about, you know, the town meetings that we have or implementing the new trash, you know, pickup or just all of those pieces, like it's an education, I think, overall. I think this fits into it, just an awareness of what is available within the town. The schools have been amazing as far as getting out the information. That's mostly where I've gotten most of the referrals, I guess you could say, as far as the phone calls I get are from either school guidance counselors, the pediatric offices or my friend told me about this and they said that you were great and can you help me? So word of mouth. I think that's how things happen too, you know, with as far as, not to parallel with the trash pickup, but that trash pickup, like my friend told me about this and they called the town manager's office and asked a question. So I think more about, you know, departments understanding who I am, more entities in the town, I think that helps too. So if, like at Market Basket or like the nail salons or the dog groomers or like places like that where people chat and talk, you know, then, then you're able to get that information too. I do not have a marketing background. I have said that several times, you know, so any inform, any ideas, I'm, I'm on board for trying.
Anything else? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Lot, lot, lot of work in the past year, so thank you.
Thank you.
So next we have a discussion of the potential scope and structure of a pay-as-you-throw waste disposal option in Westford. And I know, you know, we've got data issues because with the change of contract, May, June came in higher than we thought, which we, higher than expected, but we kind of thought that that might be the case given the turnover. And, you know, so far, we've had pleasant surprises for July and August being a little bit under what we expected. We don't want to base a new prediction based upon two months of data, but we're getting kind of a whipsaw here, but so we're not going to tonight make a decision on pay-as-you-throw. It's more a case of, you know, what are the options we have? How could they be put in place? And at some point, as we go through the budget cycle, we'll say we want to have a certain offset goal as, as part of that project and sort of enterprise account to do that. But in the meantime, I want to, Mike, to sort of say, here's the art of the possible, here's what other towns might be doing and we can give him direction to do, you know, proceed and come back with a refined approach. So that's the plan.
So maybe I missed it, but I don't know, what's happened in July and August? Okay, so either I missed it or?
You haven't missed anything. We were just processing the data. I shared with Scott yesterday.
Okay.
So we wanted to just make sure that everyone knew, we're, we're still getting our data from E.L. Harvey on what we're recycling, what we're throwing away in terms of trash, and we're showing that we have less trash that is being thrown away in July and August than has been in May and June. And that may be because people are getting rid of everything they possibly could because of the limits. We're still assessing that data. So this is very fresh. You did not miss anything.
Okay.
And I think just to piggyback on Scott's opening, I think at a previous meeting or a conversation that Tom and I have had, based upon the budget task force findings, pay-as-you-throw or reducing solid waste is something that we wanted to dig into. And before I had Mike and Dan and others in the town run a bunch of scenarios for you, we really wanted to have a conversation with the board of what are you looking for in the future? Are you looking to reduce waste? Are you looking to create revenue? Is it a combination of both? And how can we do that? There's many ways to do that. So Mike has certainly collected some data of what our comparable communities are doing related to their solid waste. We're prepared to present that this evening, but we really want to receive feedback from the board on what types of plans you would like us to create and options to bring forward to you. So Tom, I don't know if you wanted to lead off with anything else before Mike gets into some of the data and some of the questions he has for the board.
Well, Mike may be getting into exactly this, but one thing that I would find particularly useful is if we're looking at making tough trade-offs in this budget cycle like, like I think we are, it would be interesting to me to know how other towns that are doing pay-as-you-throw have implemented and what kind of offset revenue they're collecting in terms of fees or permits. Because I think our first step would be to say, we should, if we're, before we go reducing services in the fire department, for example, maybe we should look at providing an equivalent benchmark level of service to what other peers are doing. So I'm very interested to know for our peer communities that are doing this, what level of offset permitting are they getting as a percent of their trash budget? I think that's an important thing to know. And then I'm interested just structurally, given the different methods available, if you just picked a number like five hundred thousand dollars as a budget offset, how would that show up to different kinds of residents in fees? So I don't know if we, if we've, you know, created sort of different prototype people, but I'd be interested to know how it affects a young family that might have more trash, how it affects an older couple that might today just been bringing down one bag, just to see how the fees distribute amongst people in the town. So that's a lot and I don't expect you to have that tonight, but those are the things that I think would be helpful, at least to me, to make a decision as we're entering the budgeting process.
That's the kind of guidance we're looking for is what kind of data you do want to see. And I'm glad to hear you don't want to see it presented tonight because we don't have that. That, that's actually a big hole in the data for what we have. What we've got is, is big picture averages. We've got, you know, number of households, we've got total tonnage. That doesn't paint a very good picture of what the average household puts out. So we've actually just kicked off two additional pieces of gathering data that we think are going to help. One is the recycling commission's actually doing surveys throughout town. So they're going to, they started last week, they'll be working through the first week of October, hitting all routes, hitting all collection days and getting just a visual survey of what households are putting out. Because if I take just the aggregate data, I can easily infer, which might be erroneous, that the average house is disposing of less than what would fit in a thirty-five gallon container. I think we drive around town and we see quite a few households that exceed that. So we don't want to necessarily make recommendations around that without knowing how it's going to hit everybody. So that is going to be a, really a subjective survey that we're going to do. We're also going to do a website survey, an online survey using the ZenCity platform to ask people a variety of questions, you know, what, what does their average week look like? Give them some examples of some different container sizes, you know, scaled so they get an idea of what fits in each. Try to find out what works for most people most of the time. The, the big question that we're going to have is what do we, if we do pursue something that has a smaller cart size or a bag size, what kind of options do we have for the balance? And that was one of the reasons that we cautioned kind of holding off on strict limitations on barrel sizes and barrel numbers because moving into the new contract, we didn't have a good way to deal with that excess amount. So, you know, holiday comes around, you got three or four extra bags. Right now, the only mechanism we have is the bulk waste fee, which I'll, I'll come right out and say is, is too high for people that need to dispose of occasional extra stuff. So we're going to do those pieces of information gathering and kind of put all that together while we're also doing a much deeper dive into our current tonnage. And Andrea, you mentioned the, the, the new information. So we, we've had month over month comparing July and August of this year with July and August of last year and the previous year, a significant reduction in our tonnage. I want to know where that, where that's gone because we haven't seen that offset by an increase in our recycling amounts and we haven't seen that hit in the bulk waste stream. So I want to, I want to see a few more months of data to really get an idea, is this the trend? Is it in fact a result of the changes that we had moving into the new contract? So we've got a, we don't have the information right now to make a projection of what FY twenty-five is going to look like, much less FY twenty-six, simply based on that change. And so we want to make sure we have a good data set, we get a good idea of what residents dispose of before we bring you some options, but we wanted to get a decent idea of what those options were. We're working to update the data gathering that was done during the budget task force and also in previous pay-as-you-throw analyses that the town did to update the fees of our peer communities that were using the budget task force as that guide, those, I think those twenty communities that we have in there. About five of them show, a, 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 a lot of them show a pay-as-you-throw, but they're, the documentation we have doesn't show some specific revenue amount. So we've got to dig into that a little bit more. We do know fees and structures on about five of them. So there, there's a handful that, that have some level of fee to offset their, what, what is primarily a levy-supported collection effort. There's, there's only a handful that are true enterprise fund that are self-supporting. Most of them are some, somewhere in between. So we're, we're getting all that together, we're kind of reframing it around those peer communities so that we're not using the data that we've used, I think in some cases in the past, where we're looking statewide, we're looking at different areas. So between all of that, we've also gone through and refined our household list. So when we put the contract out to bid originally, we, we estimated around eighty-five hundred households. That was a year or two ago, year and a half ago. We've gone back with the assessor, we've looked at the board's policy on who we will and who we won't collect from, we've worked with GIS, we've refined that number down to about seventy-nine hundred of eligible households. In the process of doing that and in the process of kind of looking at the rollout of the new contract, dealing with dumpsters for different locations, it brought up a lot of other things that we saw that we wanted to know if the board wants us to look at including those in models. We have a policy, for example, that the board passed in twenty nineteen that excludes pickups from nonprofits, churches and multifamily above four units. But we're still doing that in a lot of cases. So we need to understand, do we want to go back and enforce those policies, calculate that into the model? Because we're paying a significant amount of money to pick up at a number of properties around town that aren't eligible by our own policies. So there's a lot, every time we turn something over, we're finding something new that needs to be dealt with. So there, there's a number of other things that we could be looking at that could generate some cost savings or at least change the way we approach kind of our entire trash stream that are going to have to factor in that. But just generally speaking, the, the, Tom, you had mentioned kind of trying to get an idea of what things look like. Right now, the only thing we can do is give you some just ballpark ideas and some ballpark concepts and let you give us some guidance. You can give us guidance later on them also and then come back with a much more refined presentation that includes data. So, I mean, for example, we could look at, you know, a household fee. Every house that's eligible having some level of fee assessed on that house to contribute towards helping to offset that. So just as an example, if we did twenty-five dollars a year, that's going to bring in two-hundred thousand dollars more or less. You know, your hundred dollars a year, about eight hundred thousand. So kind of to give you an idea, we're not a hundred percent sure that a pay-as-you-throw system that you might be familiar with, like a bag type system, would work in Westford. So we want to ask the public in this survey about some of the challenges of using just bags without containers, waste issues with bags, et cetera. There's several different models around pay-as-you-throw that might be, might work very well for us that we could do in some type of a tiered fashion where, you know, we have a minimum cart size, say thirty-five gallon, that is covered by the levy and the excess over that is dealt with through a fee. So that would be an option. Again, until we know what households that would apply to, we don't know how to model that. So that will be coming out of the survey results and our deeper dive into the data. But, you know, there's, there's a number of different ways that different towns are doing it, but we've got to have significantly more data and a lot of it is going to rest on seeing a few more months of what this collection looks like. Also, you know, there, I have some general questions about some of the underlying data that we have when we look at per household disposal. The numbers that we've had in the past in many cases have included schools, they've included our municipal facilities. So we've got to back all that stuff out, which we have one contract and one tipping fee, so we really don't have good guidance for how to divvy all that stuff up and figure out what's coming from the residential stream. So there's a lot of analysis that we're going to have to do on our end to kind of back into that stuff again and make sure we've got good numbers. But, you know, you've got the option really to look at kind of a bag-based pay-as-you-throw, a, you know, fee per household or some combination of the two that would get us there. It, it would, it would be helpful just to get some general thoughts on that. And also, do you want us to, do you want us to look at some of these other cleanups around our own policy? That will help reduce costs and bring our service more in line with what our policy says it should be.
And before we open up to the comments, I just want to be clear, Mike has spoken with Harvey and going to any model will not alter our contract in any way. They're willing to, there's no change, correct?
No change at all. It's.
We wouldn't have to alter the contract.
We would anticipate, I guess from a contract standpoint, I've, I've long said, even when we started looking at the, at the barrel changes, the industry has moved towards cart collection. So whatever we do needs to be really focused around the idea that. So whatever we do needs to be really focused around the idea that we need to move to a fully automated collection. Since we have changed haulers, I would say that, you know, a fully automated cart collection would probably eliminate the vast majority of customer service issues we have right now, because those are pretty much all of the issues we have. We have a handful of missed collections, but it's handling of manual collection. The industry has moved away from it. I think as we move towards a cart-based system, we make ourselves much more competitive when we go out to bid the next time also. We were at a disadvantage approaching a bid market with manual collection, because nobody offered it. Two of the vendors didn't even offer that. But what kind of cart we go to is irrelevant for Harvey's contract. It's very important when we start talking about paying for that, because that impacts the grants. The grants are only available for the small carts. So that'll all be factored into the different things we model out, but we're open to any thoughts or anything you guys want to see specifically when we bring you back, you know, a series of proposals that are kind of hopefully tailored to what you have in mind.
So what, this, not really related, but it comes to mind, does Harvey have any, you know, disposal bins that are, say, hydraulic? Because, so, what I think of is Sergeant School and Tadmuck, we've got seniors with wheelchairs. And it is impossible with a wheelchair to get a lid open and throw the bag in. So are there, are there some kind of options to get that lid up that we could work with?
Well, actually, I talked to Nancy on that one, the other, on Sergeant School specifically. And there really are no good options. I'm going to bring a cart out there for them. They said a cart would solve their temporary problem. Honestly, their issue there, in talking with Nancy on that particular issue that we have, it's actually an access to the dumpster, because they've got the side door that they can access. They can't get the wheelchairs up to the dumpster because of the mud. So we'll work with them to try to figure something out that works, but, you know, there's going to be a lot of little itty-bitty things we have to deal with.
Thanks. So, back to the, Tom.
So, I think we're thinking any significant change to, actually implementing pay-as-you-throw would be next July. So we've a little more time on that. The thing we don't have a lot of time for is the budgeting process. So I think the thing I'm most interested in is your estimate of the savings we might achieve if we followed our own policy. I think that's an interesting idea. If you think there's some real tonnage reduction savings that would come from that, I'd like to know what that number is, if we can decide if we want to put it in the budget. And I think, at least for me, the most useful thing would be for our partner, for our communities, partner communities, peer communities that use a pay-as-you-throw, some sort of list of what we think the percent offset to their trash budget is. Because we need somehow to get to a number. If we find out that in our peer group, on average, they're offsetting 10% through fees, that'll give us a reasonably good ballpark to think about as we go into our planning process. The specifics of actually how we do it, I think we have a little more time to think through. But that would be most interesting to me, because I think we need those numbers more or less now.
Yeah. Well, those are, those pieces are the ones we're working on right now. As far as the estimates, general ballpark, just on the cleanup on the contract, is probably $30,000 to $40,000, based on what we estimate the dumpster costs are and the tipping fees. It's, I've got to refine the tipping portion of that, and that's going to be part of trying to get to that ultimate household number. If we took the reduction we've seen thus far in the first two months and push that out for the entire year, it's about a $130,000 savings.
Right, but I'd want to take that and take our pure community average pay-as-you-throw off.
Yep, absolutely, yeah. We're going to plug all that stuff in, but that's helpful to understand if we want to really put it in context of what's happening in the neighbors, yeah.
And I guess on the, on the policy side, I think we like to follow our own policies, so we should have a plan to enforce that. However, my concern is if you've got a apartment building with four or fewer units, and we tell the landlord, oh, by the way, you now have your own trash pickup, A, they have the contract for that, and secondly, there may be a rent increase that follows that. So I want to make sure we've got enough time to work with that no one gets caught here with the expenses they didn't plan on.
Yeah, I've already talked to a few of the properties, and just as we were working through the dumpster issues, to, we had things that Waste Management had on site and Acme had on site that we didn't have in our inventory of service provisions. So when those units got yanked out, we had to, we got calls saying, hey, we have no dumpsters. Well, we didn't know we were providing service for you. It wasn't even in an original contract. So digging back through that and trying to figure it out, we did have some conversations saying, hey, listen, we'll take care of this for now, because, you know, that's how it's been. We're going to come back and talk to you, because this is, you know, we have to figure out a way to make this work, but we're not going to leave you without service. So we'll definitely have good communication with them along the way. And there's also the alternative, if we choose to continue serving them, they pay, because these are tax-exempt organizations primarily. So if we want to have some level of fee recovery, we can certainly get them a better deal than they would be on their own by wrapping them into our contract. In any case, we don't feel that we need the taxpayers subsidizing non-taxpayer trash pickup, so.
Any other comments from the board?
Yeah. Chris?
So if we were to say, I'm not saying we were going to do this, but if we were to say, we're not going to pay for trash services, could we still retain our recycling? And could we say no trash for the, and still honor the contract that we have with Harvey?
Well, my guess is that we would not be, from a procurement standpoint, we would not be able to retain the recycling portion without taking new proposals for that. But it's certainly in the town's discretion to discontinue providing that service, based on what the contract language reads. The ultimate out that pretty much any municipal contract has is non-appropriation. So that, right there, can give us cause for termination. I wouldn't necessarily recommend that without a whole lot of research and discussion, but yes, there's nothing saying we have to provide trash service. There's plenty of towns that allow that to be a private service. And that's most of the vendors. There's not as many communities in the state that municipally contract all of the service. There are quite a few that just say, you guys are on your own, go contract with the old Harvey. There's protected territories, certain towns have agreements with vendors to say, you know, we're only going to allow you to collect in our town. But they're basically, it's, private contracting is reliable and well in a residential trash pickup. It is significantly more expensive for the residents.
So I guess my question to fellow board members, given that we do have a potentially very large budget deficit, should this be something that we should be analyzing? Is just removal of trash pickup entirely?
What I'm hearing, though, is that it would cost residents a whole lot more. So what they would...
I hear that, yes.
Which would you save in taxes, you more than pay trash pickups? I don't...
I just think we need, we need options. I don't know where we're going to find $3.6 million otherwise, so if residents are expecting us to think outside the box and come up with ideas to close this shortfall, is that one that we as a board want to look at? And I don't know how much it would, for example, I would like to know as part of this analysis, what would be the cost to the residents to go private?
Yeah, it might be cheaper to pay to throw at everybody than it is to go private.
Maybe. I just think maybe, I'm just wondering for, I'm asking the board, is it something that we want to include as part of the analysis, or we're just have no appetite for it, so don't even waste staff's time to look at it?
I guess I was thinking sort of the sliding scale of offset from, I mean, like Concord is 100% offset, so it's basically a pay-as-you-throw for everybody. And then, but they, but they contract municipally. They basically have the extreme pay-as-you-throw version.
Yep.
And then there are other people who I think offset, you know, 20% or less. So I guess I would like to look at options within the full range of what peer communities are doing. So to your, to your point, we should look at what a fully offsetted pay-as-you-throw might look like. I guess I'm, at least my thinking was, we'd probably go center of mass to average first, but I think looking at the numbers makes sense.
It's also a good benchmark, you know, in terms of, this is what it would be if we were 100% versus other, other options. So I think it gives people a good sense of the benchmark, and, you know, are they saving? Are they not saving? What is the savings? How much? And that kind of thing. So I think it's, it's just as a data point, probably a good information to have.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a different data point than the 100% pay-as-you-throw the town contracting with the service. We could call Harvey tomorrow and say, how much do you charge a resident for, in a town that you don't have?
We know, yeah.
You know, we know of those towns, so we can get that information very quickly. So I don't think that's too much work for the staff.
Well, I would say it sounds like we would like to see that.
I think if the idea is that we want to look at the peer communities, there are a couple of them that do that, and so they would be showing up on that data point anyway. What, you just gave me the idea of thinking, I think that's something we push into the survey. We can ask that question and get people's sense. I mean, I can tell you ultimately that it is significantly cheaper for people to essentially get the service from us, because we're pooling 8,000 households together. But if that's something that people are interested in, I mean, I got, I'll look at anything. I just want a good idea of exactly kind of where we want to focus. And I think the other kind of key piece that we'd like to understand is something Kristin mentioned when she, when she started, is, you know, there's two lenses we can be looking at this through when we're modeling things, and they both, depending on which one or how much of one versus the other we look through, they're going to impact the types of recommendations we bring. And that's, are we approaching this from a purely fiscal standpoint, or do we want zero-waste, long-term goals to factor in as well? Because that changes the type of structure that we might want to look at, because decisions we make now will impact what we're able to do several years down the road. And so, you know, a general sense of, you know, yes, our zero-waste initiatives, those are important and we need that to factor in, because if the marching order is cost-only, you're going to come out with a different recommendation.
So do you have enough?
Well, from my, to answer Mike's specific question, from my perspective, yes, I want you to factor in, you know, sustainability.
Waste reduction.
And waste reduction. You know, anybody who knows me, I always want it all. So, yes, I certainly want you to factor that in. I mean, yes, we're looking for cost savings and cost reduction, no question about it, particularly with respect to the budget that we're facing, but it's also a balance. I, you know, we can't lose sight of waste reduction in this town and what that means for the town and for what we're already trying to work on. There are two goals, and in some ways, I admit, there at times can be in conflict. But I think also we need to be able to balance them and make them work together. So I would want them both. So my answer to you is both.
Yeah, and I think in this particular case, they're not necessarily at odds, right? If we, if we give the resident, or we imposed on the resident the true price of trash collection, I would think that will drive waste reduction, because they will not want to throw away as much and pay for it.
I would hope that you're right.
Okay, we're, I know we're running late, so do you have enough to work on, or do you need...
I have enough to work on, and I'll, that's, I appreciate all of that feedback. I think that's...
Scott, just in terms of timing, should we set an expectation about when we get these first budget driving numbers in?
We're going to basically follow our budget calendar, so I think we're looking at later November, early December for having some good pieces that some decisions can be made around. Honestly, on this, I want to push to the furthest end of the calendar that we think we can get away with and not impact the budget decisions, because I think we want more tonnage data. That's the big thing, is I want to make sure that this percentage reduction that has been very consistent for two months, if it's very consistent for three, I'll feel a little bit better projecting off of it. If it's very consistent for four, I'll feel pretty good. But the longer we can wait, I'll be working with Dan and Kristin to kind of line this into the calendar. But, you know, this, this change in tonnage was a, was a, was a big realization for us when we saw it happen a second month in a row. And it bears a lot of deeper digging, just to understand why, so.
I guess my only thought is that, to the extent, if we go there, the percent offset in the method, not necessarily the details of the method, but the percent offset becomes a major budget figure, that will require some real discussion here on this board. So, yeah, I guess Kristin, I'll just defer to you to make sure we're getting the data we need, when we need it, because we're entering the storm right now.
Yeah, we'll be balancing the timing with, with the accuracy and the reliability of the data and making sure that we're not impacting your ability to really make a decision.
And you don't want to make a decision within complete data either, and then all of a sudden find out, oh, that reduction for the first two months has all of a sudden gone up, and then it's five, so.
Yeah, you're right.
Okay.
I have one comment online as well.
And we got Emily in, so we're going to wrap it up, though, so these two, that's it.
Emily Teller, Nine Texas Road, I have three comments and a question. The first comment is, I'm 76, and any size bigger than, I have trouble with the 63 gallon or whatever it is, recycling thing, so anything bigger than that I can't deal with physically to get it out to the road. The second thing is, with the sergeant school and the wheelchair thing, that sounds like a perfect Boy Scouts, Eagle Scout project to brick up that area or something, so just keep that in mind. And I can't remember where the third comment is, but I'll get back to that. Oh, I haven't heard compost. Nobody's talked about compost. And so people are obviously, if they are contracting for it, they're paying for that themselves, or using a barrel in their own yard and using the soil. But I think compost is going to be in our calculations going forward if we're going to zero waste. And my comment is, when you first started this discussion, it was a little confusing to me. I wasn't clear if you were saying the reduction in tonnage in July and August was a concern because we weren't meeting the minimum of the contract or anything? But, I mean, I assume that, as you say, reducing tonnage is the point.
It's not a concern. The concern is, is that real, or is that just a two-month aberration? So from a budgeting standpoint, are we looking at $100,000 savings or not? And that's important to know.
So if we do less, the contract still stands, they're just getting less money.
Less is a pure good.
But we're paying less.
Okay, good. I'm thrilled to hear that, yeah. That's what I like to go to.
We just don't want a budget to less if it's not.
I'm with Andrea, we want it all. So, thank you, thank you very much.
So Christina Green said, I would not suggest eliminating trash pickup and keep recycling. We will not be competitive. In the past, trash and recycling contracts were out of sync. It was difficult to get a vendor to only bid on one and not both. If we were to go this route, eliminate both trash and recycling, the residents may not be able to contract trash only. So just wanted to say that to the board, but we will explore the options.
Okay, good, we're done. Next, our 7:50 item, a little late, discussion of the municipal opt-in specialized stretch energy code. I'm sure that's either Mike, and/or Beth.
I'm going to actually start that, as the board had asked the staff for certain things, and then certainly if clean energy passed away and we have to do that. At your last meeting, we were getting ready to have the Department of Energy Resources in to have a public forum related to what is the municipal opt-in specialized stretch energy code. So that occurred on September 12th, and I think there was some decent attendance, both virtually and in person at the Lenium School. Some questions were asked and answered. At your last meeting, the board asked several questions related to the effect on municipal projects, the effect of staff capacity, and the costs related to residential commercial construction. We prepared a memo for your packet this evening, I'll be very brief, related to municipal building projects, so specifically related to the library renovation and expansion. We don't believe that the specialized code would have an effect on that project for several standpoints. One, it's a renovation in addition, and if for any reason were to trigger, that building is planned to be all-electric anyway, so based upon the presentation we heard, we don't believe that that would trigger. And we also don't know if the code were to be placed on the warrant and to go into effect, if it were to be July 1st or later, the building permits may already be pulled for the project, and it may not even fall under that specialized code. Related to other town facilities or projects, we have been working with our architect Tekton, who's been doing the space analysis study for us. We don't have enough information at this point in time to understand how the opting code would affect other town building renovations or expansions. Related to residential and commercial construction, the code consultant and DOE are still working to study the actual costs based upon the data. There have been 45 municipalities out of the 351 in Massachusetts who have adopted the specialized code as of September 5th, and it's only been in effect in 19 of those communities for six months or greater than that. Also, there's, so there's very little data of buildings that have been completed and the costs related to that. Acton is our local municipal town that is comparable to us, and that's been in effect for about six months, so we don't have much comparable data for that. And then, we did ask for other feedback from the Permanent Town Building Committee in... And then we did ask for other feedback from the Permanent Town Building Committee and the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. The Permanent Town Building Committee, I believe, met last evening. They decided not to take a position yet because they wanted more information and data, and you have the information from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Working Group within your packet. So that is what I wanted to present from the town side. Certainly welcome any questions that you have, or if you wanted to open it up to the Clean Energy Committee. This evening, you'll hear information and then decide whether or not you'd like this to be on the town warrant for the October special town meeting.
I had the benefit of the discussion last night with the town building committee, so I've been probably doubly armed. So I'll ask other members to think any questions first for Kristin or Clean Energy. Or just we wanted, I mean, one discussion would be to say, do we want to just defer this to annual town meeting, given the lack of data for the towns? That's an option which limits the questions, but I throw it there for the board to offer their opinions. So John.
I've got a couple of concerns. One of them is the information that we'll be able to provide to town meeting, so the town meeting can make the informed decision. I don't know that the information that's been put out there so far has reached that many people. I have a question for the Clean Energy Committee. What would, if they can answer it, what would be the impact if we put it off another six months? So instead of July, what would be another year, actually? What would be the impact if we did that? I mean, is that going to cause any big problem as far as, you know, moving forward?
I guess the question is, are there any grants currently tied to this that would impact us this, the next six months?
No.
I don't believe so.
Okay. But I guess that's a question for Mike or Beth?
Do you want to?
There's still some seats over here, if those of you who are standing want to come sit. Welcome to the meeting.
Thanks. Mike Brillinsky, Chair of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee, and a member of a working group along with Beth Perkins and Tom Keller. So there's two parts, two instances. So one is the timing of the adoption by town meeting of the building code, and then the implementation of that code. So I don't think it would be critical, too bad, if the adoption was delayed from fall town meeting to next spring town meeting. Because we would still need at least that much time to complete the other parts of achieving climate leader status for Massachusetts, which unlocks the additional state funds and grants. So that is where this is a piece of that bigger package, and I don't think there'd be any delay to Westford being eligible to achieve the climate leader status if we were to delay the town meeting from fall to the spring. And then in terms of the implementation of the building code, we agree with the state's recommendation of no sooner than six months following the adoption at town meeting and on a January 1st or July 1st. So right now, it's proposed as July 1st, 2025, could also be later. So if it was pushed to the spring town meeting, then that would fall to January 2026 or later. That would be okay. So the implementation would get pushed back, that's okay, and I don't think it would impact the eligibility for grants. But we do want to have this adopted as soon as possible, so we can complete the other pieces to be eligible for additional state grants.
Thanks.
I got just, Mike?
Mike?
Follow-up question.
The climate leader thing, what is your timeline in trying to achieve that? Because one of my concerns all along has been the electrical vehicle requirements and how that would work as far as the, I think, stipulation that we would have to consider electrical vehicles on every vehicle eligible, I mean, before we, anything else. And that's just going to, and I'm concerned about how we're going to operate that way. Are we going, you know, as far as, like the police cruisers, there's got to be some kind of transition period. If we go electrical vehicle, then is that hamper that in any way? So I think there's some more information that we need, so I'm thinking move it out a little bit, and then we'd have to, but what is your timeline on the climate leader proposal?
Thank you for that. So we had originally requested that the town try to be eligible for climate leaders this year by the end of December, which is a state deadline. We have since withdrawn that recommendation, given questions and concerns. We have yet to propose a new timing, but it'll be sometime next year. So that's what we're working on, getting information to answer some of the questions you've raised. So it would be sometime maybe in the first half of next year, where we would hope, no later than the adoption of the building code, and work on the other pieces to be eligible for climate leaders, which unlocks the additional grants. But really, just getting back to the building code, I think it could be this fall or in the spring. But again, the sooner, the better, just to do these pieces.
Okay. Thank you. Your hand raised?
No, I'm good. The question was answered. Thank you.
Okay. So anybody else on the board? Beth.
Beth Perkins, also a member of the Clean Energy Committee. I just wanted to follow up on Scott's comment that he was at the Permanent Town Building Committee meeting last night, where a large part of the discussion was about whether or not this affected renovations and additions, or it was only for new buildings. And I got back specifically to our representative at the Department of Energy, DOER, today, and said, is there any addition or renovation that could trigger new construction in this opt-in specialized code? And the answer was no, this is only for new buildings. I'm also a member of the Library Renovation Committee, and as we all know, that's a 30-plus million-dollar project. It's going to increase the size of the library by 50%. When we got the answer back from Feingold Alexander as to whether or not the architect believed that the specialized opt-in code would apply, they said no. It is only for new buildings, so I just wanted to clarify that.
I'm glad you did, because there was a question, you know, typically with town and state ordinances, if you do both X percent renovation, you're quite treated as new, and that's not the case here. So that's good to know. Okay, so I have my own opinion on what to do here, which is that I feel badly we've delayed this thing from spring to fall. But also, we've had a policy that fall town meeting is for emergencies, not for, typically things like zoning and so forth is spring. So my feeling is that if there's no cost to defer, we should follow our own policies.
But we just, in counteracting to that, it was this board who said we weren't going to put it on in the spring and that we would consider it for the fall. So I just want to say that we made that decision as a board, as opposed to it just being independent. If it comes sort of independently, then I hear what you're saying, but I do think it has to be considered that. It was this board who said, please wait until the fall.
You're a good economist on the one hand, and on the other, yeah.
That's all. I just wanted to put that out there.
Tom?
What, I'm wondering what sort of additional information from towns that are a little bit further along in the learning curve we might have if we postponed it till the spring? Do we think we'll reasonably be able to at least anecdotally talk to a few of the towns to see what the impact has been? I mean, it would be very valuable if we had more information about how this affected the whole ecosystem of building.
Right.
But I also want to be realistic about, like, it's not going to be great data, there's not going to be a lot of thousands of data points. What do you think, Kristin, we could get from other towns that we might have on board now?
Well, I think we'd get three to six months more data, whether people are building new or not in those municipalities. During that time period is the data. So I can't say with certainty whether we will get more data or not. We will obviously continue trying if you do delay. We're not going to stop the efforts. If you do delay, we're going to keep up the efforts with DOER and what's going on. Right now, they're looking at making changes to the existing stretch code and what that may mean as well. So there's still a lot of moving pieces, but it's ultimately the board's decision whether it goes on the warrant, and then it's town meeting's decision as to whether it's adopted or not.
Yeah. But Jeff might be able to talk to some of his peers. He'd have six more months to try to talk to some of his peers to see if they're just feeling any real impact, or if this is all positive all around.
There certainly would be more time to do that, yes.
I mean, just to that point, one of the things that makes me feel maybe more comfortable putting on the warrant for fall is, we really have an open-ended implementation timeframe. You remember, I asked the gentleman that was here directly, you know, when do we have to do this? And we got back, oh, you know, we prefer six to 12 months, but he said, you could do whatever. So I have a feeling that, you know, if we get it adopted here in October, we could certainly set the implementation time a year out, get more data, and if for some reason it's not looking good, it's just we have to bring it back to another town meeting to reverse the adoption.
Is there a timeline to reverse?
I think he just said you just needed to bring it to a town meeting.
You have to establish the implementation date when it's adopted.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
Are you sure about that?
Yes.
Oh, that's too bad. Well, I mean, still.
In our town meeting motion, it would say the town of Westford.
But I also thought you could bring a subsequent motion. I mean, if, say you set it for July 1st, and if you weren't ready, you could bring it to the following January.
If it was established and approved with a date at some point in the future, the only way you can change that date would be to.
Go back to town meeting.
Well, that's what I was saying.
I mean, basically rescind it and readapt it with a new.
I'm just calling it amended, but yes.
I mean, the counterpoint is, if we do push it, and there seems to be a lot of confusion, lack of data, how do you explain this to people, you know, maybe hearing this for the first time on the floor of town meeting? Are we risking it getting shot down because we just don't have the data to educate the voters? That would be my real concern about moving it forward too quickly.
I guess that was my thinking, was just, would it be a more compelling case to town meeting, just because it would be more complete? But I can see the merit of those answers.
Well, we have this decision coming up on Article 9 within 15 minutes, so.
Well, I mean, it also sounds like the Climate Action Committee is saying it's okay if we move it to.
Yeah.
Annual, and if that is more aligned with our normal operating process, maybe we should follow that. It gives us, I mean, the only positives necessarily doing that. Maybe there's some negatives out there, but we would have more information. It falls in line with our normal process of, you know, deciding things at certain town meetings. And I'm not aware of what's the downside of delaying it.
Typically more attendance, so more people have a voice.
That, too.
Probably not this time.
Yes. That is true, too. Oh, you have to decide tonight, or is it, can I wait two weeks?
No, we have to decide tonight because you're signing.
That's my thought, but I throw it out there.
And we have to decide.
Not that much time.
You've got about 15 more minutes of time.
I think I could like to move it back.
So is what we heard from, let me just make it, I just want to be clear from the Clean Energy Committee, is what you're saying, Mike, is that from your committee's perspective, it doesn't matter if we delay it till March?
I guess I really just want clarification as to where your committee stands.
So, as I said before, on the one hand, yes, there'd be no critical problem with delaying it to the spring. On the other hand, for every BTU of fossil fuel that is combusted and releases greenhouse gases into the atmosphere, there is an impact. So on that hand, there is a climate impact to not wiring a house all-electric, installing fossil fuel appliances and having them get turned on by the building occupant. But from our committee, yes, we'd be okay moving it to the spring. There's no critical flaw in the big picture of trying to take the steps in line with our town net-zero roadmap and the state net-zero roadmap.
So as a follow-on, I guess where I'm thinking is, if we brought it to October, I don't know if we'd likely say that the implementation date would be July, right? We'd probably be pushing it to January 1, and then if we do it in annual, it probably still will be January 1. So actual implementation is going to be the same regardless of, you know, the starting point of adoption.
Yep, I understand.
Okay.
Would you like a motion?
Yes.
Or do we? What's the?
We can wait until our Article 9.
Actually, we'd probably wait till we get to the town meeting.
Yeah, till we get to it, okay.
I mean, to review the warrant, which is.
So you're going to give us 20 minutes or so?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll end this discussion and go to the FY '26 French Policy Direction, which.
Dan, just coming up to the table in case there's any questions. Mike, could you bring that up? So every year around this time, the Finance Committee reviews a draft financial policy direction, which they did on Thursday evening, and Dan can give an update of their conversation there. And then the Select Board votes on it at the end of September to give myself and the staff the direction in which you'd like me to bring the budget to you at the first meeting in December. Mike is going to bring up the document on the screen for those of you in the room and those of you at home. We have made minimal changes to the budget policy direction from fiscal '25 to fiscal '26. As you may recall, we made some substantial changes from fiscal '24 to '25, including discussion about the Budget Task Force work, the challenging conditions that we have related to our fiscal '25, '26, and '27 budget, anticipated budget shortfalls, and taking in those considerations for revenue and for finding efficiencies related to the Budget Task Force work. So again, the changes that we are bringing before you this evening are quite limited, but we feel encompass the challenges that we see ahead. Dan, anything you want to add from the Finance Committee meeting? I know you're not a member, but you do staff their committee.
Right. Being at this year is very similar to last year. The Finance Committee did not make any changes to the policies here or have any suggestions. So basically, yeah, it's continuing on what we've been doing. The one change we did make was just with the ARPA, where the funding expires in December of this year to appropriate more. We took out the one line about that. So that's really the extent of the changes that we had for proposal tonight.
Tom?
So two potential large pieces of work, one of which we were talking about tonight, which are key to this process, are evaluating options on pay-as-you-throw trash. So I think, just because it's such an important, meaningful dollar input, it might be useful to have that as one of the deliverables here. The other is working on evaluating options for the healthcare trust, which is a major budget line item. And I know quite a lot of analysis is going on there, so I think it might be useful to include that here. And the other thing that's going on in the background, and it may be covered sort of indirectly in the Joint Chair's comment, is the budget efficiency, kind of ongoing rolling budget efficiency review. I know that's a lot of work, and I just would want to recognize that continuing to do that, to look for budget opportunities, is an important input to this process as well. So maybe those three friendly amendments.
So maybe, Tom, so looking at this, and at least picking up on the first thing you said, the bullet that says reflect early consideration and discussion of potential approaches to address budget shortfalls, taking into consideration the recommendations from the Budget Task Force, including but not limited to looking at trash collection and health, and the healthcare or health insurance. And I think you could just probably add that phrase to the end of that one.
Yep, that's a, Mike, that's a great suggestion.
Any other comments from the board?
Well, I just want to be, so Kristin, does that give you enough direction, specifically on the healthcare side of the, to do something? Like, how do you interpret that direction from us? I know the pay-as-you-throw, I think we've talked about, so you probably have a pretty good understanding, but we sort of are saying you need to look at reducing the amount of money that we spend on healthcare and the budget.
Health insurance.
Health insurance.
Sorry, thank you. Is it, you feel like that's enough direction for you to make meaningful?
I do, and I know we talked about it two meetings ago, and we're going to be talking about it again the end of October. So I can say in public that, yes, I understand the direction and I understand that policy, so.
Do you need to know, like, just as Mike was asking about from pay-as-you-throw perspective, the, a potential dollar value that the board is interested in seeing as a proposed reduction?
I think that's really difficult because I'm balancing the employees or potential employees versus the budget. So having a dollar target is very, is very constricting, I think. Even having a percentage is quite constricting. I think. Even having a percentage is, is quite constricting. I don't know, Dan, if you added anything you wanted to add on that.
Yeah, there's only so many changes we can make that, you know, to the extent of GIC. So I think that the total possible savings with that, based on the broker's comments, were about $700,000 of the budget. So it's somewhere in that range is what our extent is.
Why do you feel that that's the limit that you can-
Based on analysis given there, why the health insurance trust, and that we, we can't make health plan design changes further than what's in the GIC. So that's as far as we can go. So-
And I think for fiscal '26 alone, we would still be paying our runout costs, so it may be very limited, or, or no savings at all if we were to move to another carrier. But making plan design changes within our self-insured model may be possible.
Like the percentage-
Like retiree healthcare percentages-
Contributions, yes.
For surviving spouse, yes.
That's something you can still look at?
Yes, correct. Yes.
My understanding of the guidance we had up to now was we were to look at it and get the most effective result. I didn't remember saying that we had to reduce it. I don't think that was part of-
I don't think we'll ever be reducing healthcare, to be honest, because it continues to go up.
Reducing healthcare costs, I mean, keep it at a minimum, but we, I, reducing the cost, I mean, that's going to be difficult.
Tom? I think we've, we've talked about this, and, and so I'm happy to accept the fact that I think you have enough information at board. The, the thing that will matter to me a lot is, which I've told you before, is some way to deal with the thorny issue of benchmarking. We want to make sure we're offering something that fits within the range of what our peer communities are doing. So it's not necessarily to be cheapest, it's to be what fits within that range of competitiveness and offers the best value to, to the employees in the town, I think.
You lost it?
So, so do you want a motion to approve?
Yep. I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry. I have another question. Well, I do, well, we did get an email from Valerie, and I do have the same question about the second bullet point, which, what do, what do we mean by the anticipated future contractual mandated obligations? So what do you, does that mean that you're, tell me what you, what do you, how do you interpret that?
So I interpret that of both union contracts for labor as well as service contracts, like solid waste and recycling, or other service contracts that we have. So we would want to fulfill what we know today to budget for those contracts, to make sure that they continue over the course of the fiscal year, and then plan for the anticipated contracts that would be settled in the coming years as well.
Which are quite a few, right?
Yes, so currently working, yeah.
Pretty much, okay.
For the town side, all of them, yeah.
The only other thing I was going to bring up is, you know, this, this does talk about free cash. You know, historically, we have not, as a community, used free cash to balance the budget. Do you need any direction in here if that's something that we need to look at as the, to offset some of the budget deficit that we're anticipating for this next fiscal year? Or is that something we can talk about later?
I think we would talk about that later. We're still processing the budget requests now. Dan's still working on the projected revenue, so I don't want to make that, you know, decision at this point in time.
No, but if you needed to do substantial analysis to come back to the board with a recommendation, for example, if we were to use $2 million of free cash, it would have these, it would have these repercussions, whether it's lowering our bond rating and the resulting increase to our debt payments because of a higher interest rate because of a lower bond rating. Is that something that you can do without having it explicitly listed in this document?
Yes. We do that every year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Andrea has a motion to amend.
I didn't, I thought you were done, so.
I'm sorry, yes, yes.
I've got a question about the one down below where we eliminated the rescue plan. Any new proposed ongoing positions? New proposed ongoing?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that doesn't make sense to me. It's either ongoing or it's new proposed.
Not necessarily.
Well, new proposed ongoing, when you get down there, they talk about reductions-
I mean, ongoing positions, like they would continue. So any new positions that would continue into the future, rather than any new temporary positions?
Right, any new permanent employees.
Okay, permanent, okay.
It's, it's worded a little, yeah, flunky. I mean, I might be-
They probably should make ongoing, permanent.
Yeah.
Any new proposed permanent positions?
So there, there were now two amendments. I assume Angela has a friendly amendment to her amendment, so we can then say, we have an amendment. Is there a second for Andrea's amendment?
Second.
Okay. So I guess, can we make a, well, real quick, let's approve the amendment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now, to approve the budget directive itself, is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
To a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to the decision point for the town meeting warrant, so-
Stay up here if you want, because of the warrant.
Just can't get away.
So the-
Making it worth your while.
The first, the first decision is, do we, do we accept all of these for the warrants? I guess go through one of one. Article 1, amend the zoning bylaw to define and regulate firearm businesses and related terms. I think that has to be in. Article 2, amend the zoning bylaw to define, update, and to regulate additional uses and to update the allowance for contractors yard, general service establishment, business or professional office, brew pub, brewery, distillery, or winery, restaurant, and massage establishments. That, we can-
Let's try, I think the first four-
Okay.
Need to stay on.
Okay, so Article 3, amend the zoning bylaw to establish or monitor modified park requirements for second uses, and amend the zoning bylaw relative to use of temporary trailers to achieve consistency with general law, section 4048, was it paragraph 3?
Section 3.
Section 3, thank you. So those four, we, we keep in. Number 5, I believe, we're going to remove, Dan?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So 5 is out. 6 through 8 are amend the chapter 51 general bylaws for reconsideration at town meetings, amend chapter 175, the general bylaw, publication of bylaw amendments, and rescind chapter 157 of the general bylaws on transient merchants. Those, I think, we will keep in, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So the question is on the placeholders. Article 9, to amend the energy code by adoption specialized, such code of 2023, do we want to keep that for, for fall or move?
I think based on our discussion, I propose that we move it to the annual, March.
So let's just take that one and say, do we-
Do you want to vote on that before you just say, you have a motion in a second?
As I say, is there a motion, well, I think we have a motion second, Tom and Chris, right? So, so do we want to, so do we want to remove Article 9 from the warrant? All in favor? Or is it, aye, okay. Article 10 is also a placeholder to accept Cloverleaf Lane as a public way.
Well, I think, having heard from the planning board tonight and what we did in our discussion previously, we keep this.
Yeah. Authorize the Select Board to acquire by gift two vacant parcels of land located off Howard Road and one vacant parcel of land off Kirsty Circle for general municipal purposes. That stays in. Article 12, to enable citizens to vote on war articles without physically attending, is a citizen's petition, it has to stay in. So the warrant, I think, is set then with now 11 articles.
I'll move to close the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we could take-
Kristen, do we have to sign it tonight as well?
You do. So Dan is going to print out a new copy for you. And then, if you wish, you could vote your recommendations on several of the articles. I want to hold the zoning, hold the gift of land, and hold the citizen's petition for your October 8th meeting.
So 6, 7, 8, and 10, you could vote on tonight if you wanted to. Take positions.
Just got my-
Oh, Mike.
I'd like to make a comment before-
Sure.
-you move on to other. So just, thank you for the discussion, the consideration. Just on the building code article, appreciate it's, you decided to move it to the spring. Just ask that we please don't run into the same situation where you're facing a very packed or challenging situation for the spring, and then you propose to move it to the fall. So just, just want to put that out on the record now. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for putting that down.
Okay, I mean, is there, well, because it's tonight, you want to defer this whole thing till next meeting?
No, let's do the last-
Okay, so is there a motion to support?
I'll move to, I'll move to support Article 6.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
And I'll move to support Article 7.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll move to, I'll support, move to support Article 8.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I think that's all you wanted us to do tonight.
10 as well, if you, the Cloverleaf Lane, if you feel comfortable.
Oh, I'll move to support that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. That's, that much accomplished on the warrant. Now for the, well, most of us are here for, actually, this 12. We have one in front of that. So we have an update on Ap Tree at 15 Nutting Road, and I know Kyle's here, and I think sort of Ap Tree is here as well, so.
So Kyle will just give you a brief update, and then I'm sure Mr. App can weigh in on his information.
Evening, Board. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you for your patience.
Oh, of course. So we're, so I'm here tonight to give the Board an update on the tree that was removed at 15 Nutting Road. A little bit of history, its background, and then I'll give some possible options for moving forward. Mr. App is in the audience today, if you'd like to speak to him as well. Excuse me. So I was notified of a substantial tree cutting operation back on October 19th of 2023 at 15 Nutting Road. When I went out to view the site, I made a determination that an approximately 90-year-old northern red oak tree was cut down, and that that tree was a public shade tree. So we went through a process on that, and at the January 9th, 2024 Select Board meeting, I made a presentation to the Board about what the tree laws were, what is a public shade tree, and then got into specifics about two separate trees, one on Flag Road, one on Nutting Road. Tonight, I'm just going to focus on the Nutting Road tree. At, at the time, I informed the Board of the unpermitted taking of the town's resource and offered an opinion of replacement value in accordance with the Council of Tree and Landscape Appraisers Guide for, for plant appraisal. The calculated value of the tree was estimated at $24,889. After hearing from the owner of the tree removal company, the Board elected to fine Ap Tree $500 for the removal of the tree, which is in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 87, and, and requiring Ap Tree Company to plant a replacement tree with an approximate value of $1,500. Following that meeting, I coordinated with Mr. App and laid out a timeline for the planting, which was agreed to be completed by the end of May 2024. As part of the project, Mr. App was told that he would need to submit a planting and maintenance plan for the tree that included a three-year warranty. Mr. App followed up by paying the fine and agreeing to perform the work. Despite many calls and reminders, to date, the tree has not been replanted. At this point, with the planting season coming to a close soon, I suggested that it was appropriate to invite Mr. App back to meet with the Board to answer for his inaction. As I see it, the Board has a number of options it could exercise tonight, some of which include grant Mr. App an extension to plant the tree in September, October timeframe after submitting the planting and maintenance plan, assess the original fine of $24,889 to compensate the town for the value of the tree that was removed, require Mr. App to pay an amount to the town that would cover materials and labor for the Parks Maintenance Division to purchase, plant, and care for the tree for a minimum of three years. I'd estimate that value at about $3,000, or some combination of the previous items or other, other options that you guys may come up with. With that, I'll thank you for your time, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
I guess one question would be, you mentioned the push the date back to September, October. Is it, is a tree going to be viable next year if you plant it that late in the season?
So I did talk to John Rivas, our Parks Maintenance Foreman, today, and asked him that same question. And he said it could be. It, it should be fine as long as it gets planted before frost. And there's some measures that the arborist would take to, to help ensure the success of the tree. Should be to put in a bed of mulch to help with the, keep the frost away from the roots while it's doing its initial rooting. But that would also be part of the three-year warranty as well.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah, Mr., I guess, he should be allowed to respond and have to take questions as well. You can use a microphone, you can, yeah, I guess probably use a microphone maybe best, or Chris, Kyle can move over.
I have purchased a-
So, but, but a better formality is introduce who you are.
I'm Edward App, owner of Ap Tree Company, been in business 40 years. I've planted hundreds of trees, haven't had one die yet.
Why haven't you planted the tree that you said you were going to plant by May?
Because of heart failure.
Oh.
Okay, I'm a veteran, I have a heart issue, and even my regular work has put me behind. But I contacted Western Nurseries, I've got a two-inch diameter northern red oak, 10 feet high. We just got to pick it up, put it in. We got a certified arborist that's going to supervise the operation. It's very simple. I can have it in, no later than the end of next week. I can try to do it this week. It's very quick. Done. I drew a plan up for the tree warden, showing the person's house, the driveway, where she wanted to put it in. She planted a row of arbivores and some flowers, and she wants it on the outside, more towards the wood side of the property. It's very straightforward, simple. We do them every day.
And I guess, in terms of agway maintenance, is she going to be committed to watering it and so forth?
Sir, she's going to, she's going to water them. We're going to put compost in and fertilize it, and every year we'll put additional as needed. Trees are tough, they, they survive.
I guess, so I guess Kyle, just, is that, is that size tree what we had in mind for a replacement?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Kristen?
Kyle, is, I believe that there was a requirement to have a certified plan by an arborist before the planting. Have you received that certified plan yet?
I've not received any plan as of yet.
I've got a plan certified. I get a, a letter from the certified arborist saying he's going to be there to supervise the whole operation. I simply drew a basic plan, the house, the street, the driveway, the, the new arbivores, and where the, the new tree would go in.
So we need Kyle to get the certified plan from the arborist. That was a requirement set forth back in January.
Okay, I can contact him tomorrow and very quickly have him do that. Should be able to have it here by, by Friday.
So, John, give us your hand up, John, or-
Well, I was just thinking that we need to verify that at our next meeting, or have, if he's going, you know, you say you want to do it, you got the plan, you get the plan, file, and then we need to have it verified that you've done that. I mean, I, it's okay with me if he does it now.
Tom?
I guess, so Kyle, if, if we were, I guess, to ask you even just by letter, if everything's to your satisfaction, and you get the plan on time, and the tree gets put in as described, does that meet your expectations, your understanding of what's needed here in the situation?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I'll defer to the Board. Based on the decision the Board made in January, aside from the deadline, that would meet the intent of the Board from your decision back in January.
Okay, then I guess I would, on a very firm motion, no?
Yeah, I mean, what I was thinking is, our next meeting is October 8th. So if you have done what you said and you approve, then, and we have a letter from you by our meeting on October 8th, and we don't need to see anybody. But if come October 8th, you have not planted the tree and provided the information that Mr. Fox needs, then we're going to see you back here, and you're probably going to be facing a fine.
I understand. Again, I have a plan, our town manager, right here, very simple ABC drawing, and the certified arborist is going to be there.
So I'm not, I'm not the expert. Kyle's the expert, and he's been asking for this certified plan by the arborist since January. So you need to work with Kyle and the arborist to deliver.
Well, if this is accepted to you, I can have the, most likely have the tree in this week in the ground. It's a basic plan, showing where the tree's going to be planted with the certified arborist- It's a basic plan showing where the tree's going to be planted with the certified arborist there. The only difference is I'm going to give it to him, and he's going to write it up and sign it, but it's the same exact thing.
Yeah, which is what I've asked you to do a number of times.
Again, I've been sick, I have a heart issue.
To cut this short, you're going to get him the cert, you're going to get him the certified plan, you're going to let us know by October eighth, the plan, you know, even beforehand, if the plan, you know, meets your requirements, if the tree is planted by then, assuming that happens, we don't need to see both of you. If it doesn't happen, we're going to see you both here again on October eighth.
Okay, so we're possibly going to motion for this, where we're all, this is clear direction, so. Judy, do you want to?
Do you have a kind of question?
Sure, just tell us where you are and-
Judith Culver, Stone Ridge Road. My question is, and I'm new to the topic totally, was this tree on public land?
Yes.
That's why, that's why we're doing this.
Exactly, so it seems it's being replanted on private land, when we're thinking about whether the homeowner, where she wants it placed, is it in fact going on private land or public land?
Private land.
Private land. And that was approved by the Board.
Oh, it was, okay, now sit down.
I can answer the why, I heard a question as to why. So the, the location where the tree previously existed was interfering with the power lines on any road, so by moving it back onto private property, it has a better chance of surviving without future pruning. The three-year commitment gives it time for the tree to establish, makes it much less likely for anything to, anyone to want to remove it in the future.
Okay, Emily, then we're going to be, call us done.
Emily Teller, nine Texas Road, major tree hugger in Westford. I, I'm thrilled that the value of this tree was twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, and I hope that you all heard the value of one tree in Westford, and will keep that in your mind going forward. It's just really important that we have trees, so I also think that this company got off scot-free in terms of fining, but that's your decision, and it's my understanding that new trees need five gallons of water every week for the first of year of their life. I'm thinking of Diana Lane, which you're about to approve later, already did for acceptance.
It was withdrawn, but-
Anyway, trees were planted at that entrance, and they were not watered, and they're dying, and same with Griffin Roads' extension. You know, there has to be some enforcement of viability when you talk about trees that people plant.
That's why, that's why we have the three-year warranty, so.
I hope so, thanks.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
Good, thanks.
Thank you.
Now, I apologize to everybody who's been here for this item, but it falls in older business, and hence it kind of fell to this point in the agenda, but, so it is reviewing the applications for the Robinson School Building Committee and picking two of the fourteen applicants to serve. So we've all seen applications, or the activity forms in our packets, we've all reviewed those, I think we probably all made our own, you know, rank orders, in fact, as part of the, as part of the committee background, we had actually asked for two residents-at-large with knowledge of the educational mission of the facility and/or experience with architecture or engineering and/or construction experience. So the criteria that we've all been looking at have been, A, educational mission of the building, and/or two, experience with architecture, engineering, and construction, and based upon that, I think we've all made some preliminary assessments. However, an important part of this is to have each of you, if you want, you know, spend a minute or so, basically why you applied, why I think you're the best candidate, I want to give you a chance to self-advocate if you so choose. I would just do that in the order of the alphabet as we have here, so I apologize, I don't know all of you, I can, I know some of you, so.
And we have one member online as well.
One member online, so Addison Camerata is, okay, Addison, if you want to, just kind of, so as a matter of proste, kind of microphone, yes, tell us who you are, your address, and then, Chris, you have a comment?
Yes, if I could just ask the prospective applicants to just, in your answer, or your statement, just answer a couple of questions. One, many of you in your application did speak to why you want the position, others just listed, this is my qualification, so as part of your response to us tonight, I would like to understand why you're interested in the position. Two, I'd like to understand if you have daytime availability, because there may be a case that, given the makeup of this committee, that you would need to attend a daytime meeting. And three, we don't have a term limit, I think, specified for this, but this could be a multi-year commitment, so just keep that in mind, is that something that you're willing to undertake if this is a, I don't know, we've heard anywhere from five to seven years. So, not expecting you all to commit to a five-to-seven-year project, but, you know, it's not something that, just want to be making you aware, it's probably not something that you, you, it would be not helpful if you just rolled out after six months, so just keep that in mind, okay? Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Allison Camerata, Seven Pine Street in Westford. I've been a proud resident of Westford for the last ten years. I have a strong background in education with a bachelor's degree in elementary education and a master's degree in educational leadership. For the past eight years, I've served as a public school administrator, and I'm currently the Director of Communications and Community Partnerships for a nearby district. I have valuable experience working with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, particularly through the role in the planning and design of Minuteman High School in Lexington. That was about a ten-year process and had to go through multiple votes, so I saw the voting aspect of a twelve district, twelve-member town trying to vote on the finance portion of the building process, but, yeah, so as far as the commitment goes, I understand these processes can take a long time. During that time, I played a key role in developing educational and athletic spaces, selecting appropriate furniture and resources, and then managing the logistics of moving into a school building, a new facility. I'm looking to get involved and give back to our community, and believe my professional experience and commitment to Westford make me a strong candidate for one of the at-large positions for the Robinson School Building Committee. I'm passionate about creating the best possible educational environment for our children, and would be honored to contribute to this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Forget I have my glasses here, so, yeah, Panha San Chung, is she here or online? Okay, Judy Culver? Judith Culver, but I know you're, yeah.
I'm grown up now. I'm serious. Didn't like the name Judy, so I changed it when I got to be grown up. Judith Culver, Stone Ridge Road. I'm applying for this committee primarily because I feel I could be useful. I don't have degrees or anything in the specifics of building, but I have almost thirty years of experience on the school committee and the finance committee here in town, and I have been on the outskirts of all the building projects that we've had since the nineteen-seventies, probably, no, eighties. So I bring to you just a, I'm familiar with Robinson School, my children went there, my grandson went there for a year, and I've been on the SAC for Robinson School with Mrs. Robinson, and now Mr. DeCoste, so I have a range of experience of how the, how the school's actually used by parents and students as a facility that they are familiar with, and they know how it works. I know this is going to be a suggestion of whether or not to knock down Robinson and do something else. That's one of the, one of the things I'm going to be working on, but anything dealing with Robinson, I don't think I'm loyal to Robinson so much, is that I have a background of Robinson's use in this community, so I'm just offering that.
Thank you.
Now, I'm available all the time because I'm retired. Anytime of a meeting, I'll come.
Thank you. Sheila Grimm?
I don't see Sheila, okay.
I see Sheila.
Dave Lorello? Dave, coming once, twice? Okay, Caleb McKinnon, I know Kate's here.
Hello. I'm just going to stretch a little bit, there we go. Hello. I am very excited to be here, thank you all for the consideration, I really appreciate it. For those of you that don't know me, I am a school counselor and a mother, an elementary school counselor. I have a bachelor's degree in psychology and a master's in school counseling. In my field, I constantly work with all of the educational professionals in my building, and seeing the ins and outs of what could help them be able to perform their job and to support their students the best way that they could. I also have a background in developmentally, what would be good for us, our students moving forward, and the type of layout for buildings, as well as like different types of even playgrounds. I know what works well for them, and the type of time that goes into a schedule for schooling as well. I'm really excited to be here for this. My availability during the day is flexible, I am totally fine with the year commitments because I'm not going anywhere, I love Westford, and this is my home, so, yeah, I'm here for as you need me. Yeah, I would love to be able to work with the Board and being able to create a beautiful school building for our students. One would be my youngest son, who would be potentially going to that school once it's built, so, thank you so much.
Thanks. Kimberly Moran?
She's online.
There we go. Okay, can I quickly for this angle, okay?
That's me, I'm online, I have a little bit of a sore throat, so I stayed home. My name's Kimberly Moran, Two Royce Lane, I'm a Westford resident for about eleven years, and I'm interested in being involved in this project, because both my children went to Robinson, I have a freshman in college and a sophomore at the academy, and I love, I loved Robinson, I love all the teachers there. I do have a degree in interior design, and I have almost thirty years' experience in designing and construction, I currently work for a real estate development firm that, and I'm in interiors, so I specialize in renovation and overseeing, I'm a project manager, so I'm familiar with current codes, practices, environmental information, I think I can bring that to this project. I don't proclaim myself to be an expert, but I do have a lot of knowledge, general knowledge in construction, administration, budgeting, et cetera, so I'm interested in this because I care about our community, and I want to be a part of it, and I don't want to just sit back. I come to meetings quite often, I don't often speak, but my husband is involved too. We are two different people, but like, I'm very interested in participating, and I thank you for your consideration. I think what I bring also, since my children are not in there, and no, I sort of have an agnostic approach, I think I'm interested in seeing what's best for the community, and being able to maybe weigh in with the resources that I can tap into with the direction of knockdown and/or re-renovate, so my daytime availability would be probably not as flexible as everyone's, but I do have hours, I live right around the corner from Robinson, so that would be pretty easy for me to hop on a Zoom or run around if I'm working from home that day. I'm not in Boston full-time, and I'm glad to be a part of a several-year commitment as this is great, so, you know, I'm no problem with that, so thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
George, there we go, I'll light up on deck.
George Murray, fourteen Haywood Road. I think I'm coming at this from a different perspective from many of the other candidates who seem eminently qualified. I don't know why we're doing this, and I am very concerned about that. The first time I heard about this was when the Select Board formed the committee and started the process to pick members of the building committee. I don't think we need the building, I have been telling the school department for fifteen years that our enrollments are declining. I had a parent tell me last week that the, the Greystone School, the Miller School, has only about half its classrooms occupied this year. That school was overs, or underfilled, whichever way you want to look at it, shortly after it opened, and so I think we're, and if the answer to that concern is, well, there's money available from the state, and I don't know that that's the case, but that's one of the things that I've been told, that seems to me the worst possible reason for proceeding. You know, I think we've had unhappy experience over the last five to eight years trying to build an office building in the center of town, the residents have simply said we don't want it. So, that's the concern that I have. I have another big concern, and that is if this lasts seven years, which seems like a long time, I'm going to be ninety, and I may start to slow down by then, I don't know. The last time I joined the school building committee was nineteen eighty-four, and we didn't disband it until two thousand and six, so I believe the seven years. But those are the concerns that I have, if I could figure out how to make sure that those concerns, I don't have to have the answer to it, but if I could figure out that those concerns are going to be diligently examined and put to the test, I'd be very happy to not be on the committee, and I've got, I've got a lot of knowledge, I'm more than willing to share and to participate in whatever form would be useful to the committee, but I do take that seven-year time commitment as a serious thing. One other thing, and that is that with the declining enrollment concerns, we need to figure out how many schools we need, we need to figure out how many students each school will hold, and what the educational program is for each of those buildings and each of those classes, and ten years ago, Dennis Rona from the Finance Committee, and I worked for a year with the staff of the schools to answer those questions. What is the capacity of each of those buildings, and how best to allocate them? And Dennis did a magnificent job of writing the report for that, it's still on, it's on your webpage, or our town's webpage, and it's, it's just a concern that, that would require redistricting, and I think it's, my opinion is, it's never really been implemented because redistricting is a terribly difficult problem. I've been through it once, when I live five hundred feet from the Ross School, my kids all went to Robinson, so I've been that route as well. So that's the concern that I have, and trusting to your wisdom and figuring out how best to do this for the town, if I can help, I'd be happy to. I'm available all the time, except for I'm visiting grandchildren.
Thanks. Thanks. Thanks, George. Megan?
Megan O'Connell, forty-four South Thompson Road. I think all of you on the Select Board know who I am by now, for better or for worse, I don't know, but one of the reasons I applied for this committee is because of my background. I have an engineering background, I work in that field. I've worked in med device and pharmaceutical companies for several decades and have been involved in several very large facility construction build-out projects, including, if anyone's familiar with the Insulet Plant over in the God Park in Acton, I was the lead quality person on that build-out, so I do have some experience in that type of thing. I also, as you're all probably aware, in good analysis, I think I've presented the Board evidence of that over the past year or so, which I think would be very helpful in this phase of the project. I'm also, over the last few years, have grown my network within the community, kind of become a bit of a sounding board from a lot of members that are hesitant to speak publicly to the Boards, so I'm tapped into parts of the community that, again, don't feel comfortable coming up here and speaking, and I think that can be a valuable asset. As far as availability, I have a flexible schedule, so that shouldn't be a problem, and have absolutely no intentions of leaving this town, again, for better or for worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sereni Pilari? Allison Pettenell?
I don't see Allison.
Rick Posh?
Hello, everyone, Rick Posh, nineteen Chicory Road here in Westford. Why did I apply for this position? Actually- Actually, dude, I don't know much about-
Did George talk you out of it?
I don't know much about how town government functions and I watch these meetings on cable TV and it's just interesting. And it'd be fun to get plugged in, especially in light of my recent retirement from teaching at Westford Academy. So qualifications that I might bring are experience with the Westford Public Schools broadly, how a school building functions, at least at the secondary level. My children went to Robinson, you know, I've lived here in town, well, I was going to say forever, but over 30 years, and really care about education here in the town. So, technical qualifications, I'm an engineer by training, pretty familiar how a building functions, especially old buildings like the PCA, which I've been involved in for quite a long time here in town as well. So you have so many people to choose from. If I can help, I'd be glad to. If not, I'm sure there'll be other opportunities. So make your best choice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lindsey.
Lindsey Richard, 400 Stone Road. For the last 15 years, I have been working as a real estate development advisor, currently as a principal at a small advisory firm called QPD, doing real estate development on behalf of nonprofits and charter public schools, mostly in Massachusetts, but also in select markets across the country. So I've had hands-on ownership managing school projects, school building projects, renovations, ground-up construction ranging in $1 million to $75 million, currently managing a major project in Boston right now for Roxbury Prep. So I have deep familiarity with the construction process, architecture and engineering. We also do, I also do feasibility studies, so when a client comes to us, we look at what they want to do, look at their financial models and figure out what's affordable, but also like explore renovation versus ground-up and different alternates here, which I know is something that's on the table for Robinson. I work from home, I work remote, I'm a principal of the firm, it's a three-person firm, so I manage my own schedule, which is great. I have two young kids, both at NAB, one's in pre-K and the other is in first grade. My first grader went to Robinson for two years for preschool, so I'm very familiar with the building and the opportunities of the site to improve education for those current students and future students. My husband is also a public school teacher and my mother is a retired public school teacher, so education is near and dear to my heart and I do have time to commit to this and know it would be a multi-year project. I've worked with the Designer Selection Board quite intimately through the process of hiring architects for my charter school clients, so I'm familiar with that, that process, and familiar with a lot of the owners' project managers and construction managers and architects that do public work in Massachusetts, familiar with how the funding structure works through the MSBA. But I think, you know, one other unique attribute is I stay on projects and manage them, sit in the job trailers with the contractors and the architects and the school leaders, and I let the school leaders focus on doing their job, educating children, which I cannot do, and really look at every little change order that comes across the desk to figure out how to optimize all of the dollars to make sure that they're going back into the classroom and not being unnecessarily spent on things that could be avoided by assessing risk early on in the process. So, excited for the opportunity and thank you all for listening. Thank you.
Stephen Taylor.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Stephen Taylor, live on 54R, Tannion Road here. My background, I'm a civil engineer from WPI, graduated 2006, been in the construction industry for about 18 years. About $750 million worth of public construction work, both federal, MSBA, DCAM, town buildings, and so on, approximately $450 million worth of public schools all around the state. Why I want to be here, I've been sitting on that side of the table for an awful long time, having to answer committees and explain where construction's at. I want to bring that knowledge to the other side of the table, ask the questions. As someone else pointed out, make sure that the town is receiving the best value that we can. Often there are tough decisions, emotions get in the way, you want to rely on people who have that experience and that knowledge standpoint to get through it, so that you are getting the best value for the project, and I feel that those are things that I bring to the table for you. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Stephen, I'm sorry, did you have a daytime availability?
Yeah, I work from home, excuse me. I work from home, I have a construction management firm within Mass. I do have multiple projects I run, but in terms of attending meetings, any virtual meeting, I'll fit into the schedule. It's more about proper planning for me, as long as there's sufficient notice, usually I can make things work. And then if it's an emergency with my kids, obviously we'll deal with that. But big picture, yeah, it's just about proper management of time.
Okay. Thank you. And last but not least, Robert William Tivery?
Tiv.
Sorry, I did that wrong, it's not Tivery, is it Tavi?
It's Robert Tivie, 17 Lowell Road. A lot of strong candidates, yeah, it's good to see that for the town. The reason why I want to do this is I have children in the school system, a wife that works in the school system. I've been in construction for 25 years, I'm a carpenter foreman. I've worked on a lot of schools in the area, the Hildreth Elementary School in Harvard, Middlesex Regional High School in Townsend, I'm currently working at the Tobin Montessori School in Cambridge. So I see how the whole process works and I just want to be able to help out in any way I can.
Chris will ask you about daytime availability.
Oh yeah, availability, I mean, I do work in Boston, Cambridge, so yeah, I mean, I would make the availability if needed.
Thanks. Thanks. Okay, well, first of all, thanks to all of you who, because, you know, I thought we would probably get half this many, and it's actually an embarrassment of riches because it's a, a lot of people here with a lot of different and yet applicable qualifications. I don't know, I mean, I guess, are we, out of pure speculation, we're looking for two. If we had three, would that be a problem or?
So we have, we have two slots. As we said in the memo, you could certainly designate an alternate if you wish. I also just want to remind you that this evening, you'll also have to designate a Select Board representative and then officially designate all of the others to the committee, as well as we need to report back to MSBA by Monday with our slate.
I know you said we could have an alternate, but I think, Scott, to answer your question, if we wanted to appoint three, I think that's within our purview to do, as well as three permanent members.
But I'm anticipating that, I mean, I-
You'd have an even number, so just, I just want to point that out.
Yeah, I know it would be even, but-
Yeah.
So I don't have a great, we cannot, I didn't want to pre-select because I wanted to hear from the candidates. It's really, really difficult to discuss people when they're here, and I feel bad for you because-
Go away.
Look, they could just stand in the hall and watch us.
Watch on TV.
We're all programs. Okay.
So I guess, what I originally thought was if we, if we each made a original, I think in our, if not a paper, in our minds of ranking, we may or may not have moved people around based upon tonight. It'd be really, really great if we, so if we each had picked four and we have an overlap of three, then we're there. But I'm open to other suggestions of how to do this.
I think that makes sense.
Okay. So, for lack of any better organization, we'll go down the road. So John, did you have a top, he could pick three, four, five, I'm not going to, you know, but-
Okay, I got it. Allison.
I'm ready.
Yes, I'm ready now.
Allison Camerata. Caitlin McKinnon. Stephen Taylor. And I got one more. Kimberly Moran. That's four.
Andrea.
So I had Lindsey Richard, Stephen Taylor, Allison Camerata, and Kimberly Moran.
Chris.
Lindsey, Stephen, Allison, and Caitlin were my top four.
And Tom?
Also had Lindsey, Stephen, Allison.
I think we have three.
And I also have Caitlin, again.
Okay, and I had Lindsey, Allison, Stephen, and Kimberly. So I think we've got a lot of consensus.
Well, we have, I think, three, don't-
Well, we definitely have consensus for two.
Right.
The third is, I think there's-
I think everybody picked Lindsey, right?
Everybody picked Lindsey.
Oh, John did not.
No, not John, no, sorry.
Everyone picked Steve.
Everyone picked Steve, everyone picked Allison, right?
Yep.
So Allison and Steve are unanimous.
So the mechanics, if we make this a 12-person committee, is that a real problem, you think? I mean-
I don't think so. I, I mean, we've got, if you think about it, we've got, what? Pretty much, we've all got the same four. With, you know, some of them have got four votes, some of them have got threes.
So is Lindsey the next one on the list, or is it?
Lindsey has four votes.
Lindsey has four votes, so, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Lindsey has four and I think the other-
Caitlin has three and Kim has three.
Right. So my, I would put Allison, can I make a motion?
You can do that, yes.
Okay, let's see. I would move that we appoint Allison, Caitlin, no, I'm sorry, Allison, Stephen, and Lindsey.
Second.
Okay. Any deliberation, I think, okay, John, you okay with that?
So there's two Allisons, just want to be clear, Allison's C.
Allison Camerata.
Camerata, sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so it's three, not, no alternates, three, period. Okay. Very good. So I guess, all in favor?
Aye.
So I mean, thank you, everybody. I mean, I am really, I really feel bad for those who make the top four and then don't make the finals, so, but that's kind of how, when you get 14 great candidates and I think really, you know, some exceptional candidates, it just kind of falls out that way. So, but please, don't walk away frustrated. Next time, come back and-
And they're also-
And all the meetings will be public.
And they're also, they're all public meetings, so you can all go and attend and participate.
And there are lots of other options of openings in town.
Yes, absolutely.
So before we finish Robinson, I don't know if you want to clear the room or finish Robinson.
They can, but I mean, but yeah, we want to-
So we'll need, we'll need to do three extra things now. We'll need to appoint a Select Board member, we'll have to amend the charge, and we'll have to appoint the rest of the remaining committee members that you have in your memo.
Okay. So do we have a Select Board volunteer?
I'm willing to volunteer, but if there's other people who want to do it too, we can-
It's all yours.
All yours. Thank you for volunteering.
I volunteer.
Okay, so we got two volunteers.
Two. Rock, paper, scissors.
Well, one assumes that they each vote for themselves, so. Okay, I guess, Andrea and Chris and I will each have to cast our votes, right? So we can make a nomination or we can just say?
Okay, let me ask, let me ask you guys something. Would one of you agree to be primary and one of you agree to be secondary? Just, you know?
You mean, I share it?
Yeah, or, you know, if Tom can't, if Tom can't go, John goes.
You do travel a lot.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great to sort of be, John, if you're comfortable with that.
Certainly works for me.
It certainly works for me too, and I guess-
It's difficult because, I mean, John is really a great contract, you know, redefine print guy, and Tom is, you know, clearly from a school committee and knows this stuff too, so, budget guy. So they're both great candidates. So if that works out, that is a good solution.
I guess I would leave it to the two of you to decide who goes to what meeting.
Figure out who's the alternate.
Well, and generally, I'll just throw this out there, generally in these type of building projects, the Select Board member is the chair of the committee, in my experience, and I think in past MSBA projects. I don't know if that sways.
Actually, I mean, I just know when I was on the, before, that these committees, the Select Board member was not the chair.
Was not the chair, okay.
No.
Yeah.
So they independently selected a chair. Okay.
Okay, so, that being the case, we'll let you two work out, I guess we have to put a name down?
We do. We have to put a name down.
Put Tom's name down.
Sure.
Okay.
And then we'll put you, John, as the alternate. We have a vote.
Okay, so we're, the board vote is for Tom as the primary delegate and John as the alternate delegate from the Select Board. That is, I guess, a motion from Chris, a second from Andrea.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And then we have to move to-
I mean, the school committee and-
Well, we have to move to amend the charter to increase the membership from 11 to 12.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then finally, I will move to appoint all of the members who are on our list and as well who we have just appointed the three residents to the Robinson School Building Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is that good enough for your, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are done.
Thank you very much. We'll be in touch about the initial meetings and how that will play out. We appreciate everybody's participation.
So for some of these folks, like Lindsey, do you want to just tell them what's going to be next on how they get appointed and all that? Because you're all first-time committee people.
Yeah, absolutely. They just got appointed. Yeah.
Well, it's one in, right?
So you will receive an appointment letter from the town manager's office, saying that the Select Board has appointed you to this committee. Then you will, see in that letter that it says you must go to the town clerk's office to be sworn in. The town clerk's office is downstairs in this building, right now we're open 8:04. So if you can read your schedule before the first meeting. We have not set a time for when that first meeting is going to be. We're actually going to poll all of these members to see when the best meeting time is. And likely, as we get started, the meetings may be more frequently, like every other week or every three weeks, and then as we get going, it's likely going to be once a month. So we'll be in contact with you along the way, but your first step will be, you'll be receiving an appointment letter from the town manager's office and that will have further direction. So thank you, Chris, for bringing that up.
Who does the charter? You guys or they?
The charter has been already established by the Select Board. So you're free to go this evening if you wish. Thank you for sitting through our meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, we have a request from the Ad Commission to appoint Pooja Kapoor as a alternate member for term expired June 30th, 2027.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes for approval and release, regular session minutes, July 30th, 2024, August 13th, 2024, August 27th, 2024, and September 10th. Actually, I'm going to do the first three, because I ended up staying on the 10th. So the first three meetings, is a motion to approve and release?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And September 10th, motion to approve and release?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm abstaining. Board reports for updates. Okay, Kristen, ten minutes' report.
Yeah, absolutely. So the first is a grant, and as Nicole alluded to, she wrote for, and we received a grant in the amount of $40,000 from the Greater Lowell Health Alliance for the Westford Mobile Clinician Services. This was originally funded by ARPA and some other sources. So we'd look for that approval, and then, do you want me to move on to purchase orders and contracts, or do you want to approve the grant separately?
I think it's move on, it's not controversial.
Okay, great. So the next is Nexamp for electricity in the amount of $25,000, overall fiscal 25 purchase order from the Fire Department. WL French for the removal and disposal of street sweeping in an amount of $31,815 by the Public Works Department. American Alarm for the replacement of the Westford Fire Department panel in the amount of $18,533.28, as requested by the Water Department. The SCADA system for the service contract subscription, the amount of $13,600 by the Water Department. E1 installation for monitors of the Town Center Sewer System pump stations in the amount of $24,339.20 by the Water Department. And Westcor Associates, Inc. for water treatment chemicals, calcium- And Westcor Associates Inc. for water treatment chemicals, calcium, hypochlorate briquettes in the amount of $58,000, as requested by the Water Department. And then, the final contract is, we did receive contracts for the next phase of the cleanup of 12 North Main Street. Nobis Group was the winning bidder, who is currently working on Area of Concern Four, who you heard from a few weeks ago, and that's the amount of $229,400. That is being paid out of a $250,000 grant by the state for that remediation.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to waive reading of the correspondence?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night, Westford.